We all set?
Uh, just one more person.
Okay.
Joining and now we're all set, everyone then.
Great, thank you. Okay, good evening. I am calling this public meeting to order at 6:00 PM. In accordance with the Massachusetts Wetlands Protection Act, MGLC 131, Section 40 in the Boston Wetlands Ordinance, Boston City Code Ordinance is Chapter 7-1.4. The Boston Conservation Commission is holding this virtual public hearing on April 16th to review the following projects to determine what conditions, if any, the commission will impose in order to protect the interests of the public and private water supply, groundwater, prevention of pollution, flood control, prevention of storm damage, protection of fisheries and land containing shellfish, and protection of wildlife habitat. This evening's hearings will be followed by our regular meeting and in accordance with Chapter 107 of the Acts of 2022, we are conducting this meeting online to ensure public access to the deliberations of the Conservation Commission. The public may access this call through telephone and video conferencing. Additionally, the meeting is being recorded. If you do not wish to be recorded, please turn off your video. Members of the public may have an opportunity to ask questions and provide public comment on applications and discussions. To do so, please raise your hand or type in the chat in the application via the Zoom meeting platform. If you are calling in and cannot use the platform, you can raise your hand by pressing star nine and star six to unmute yourself, or send your questions to staff via email at cc@boston.gov. For the record, I am Michael Parker, Chair of the Commission. Could staff please identify themselves?
Elena Edimary with the Environment Department.
Udi Hernandez with the Environment Department.
Vivian De La Paz with the Environment Department.
Great, thank you. Now I'll call the role of Commissioners present. Commissioner Sullivan?
John Sullivan.
Commissioner Linay?
Amy Linay.
Commissioner Herbst?
Anne Herbst.
Fantastic, thank you. First item on the agenda this evening, excuse me. Notice of intent for the EP File Number 0062032 from FOTH Infrastructure and Environment LLC. On behalf of the Massachusetts Port Authority for the proposed collection of 10 soil core samples within the reserve channel at Conley Container Terminal, 800 to 900 East First Street in Boston. Resource areas or land under ocean and designated port area. Who's here on behalf of the proponent?
Yes, good evening Chair Parker, Chris Bush, Senior Environmental Planner with Massport, here this evening with Chet Myers, Project Manager, as well as our consultant team from FOTH. And I'll let Paul Marsala from FOTH proceed.
Great, thank you.
Hey, good evening. Want to share my screen if that's okay?
No, you should have a slide. Yeah, it should be loaded up. Yep. So you can just ask when you need to advance?
Sure. Yeah, so this is the Conley Terminal Maintenance Dredging Subsurface Analysis. This NOI is just for the subsurface borings for environmental sampling. There will be a separate NOI submitted for the full-scale dredging project. Go ahead. This is the project locus. The project location is Conley Terminal Berths 10, 11, and 12, located in South Boston. Next slide. So these proposed subsurface analysis vibrocores are in support of the proposed dredging, Berths 10, 11, and 12. This will be sediment testing for CAD cell disposal. There are 10 proposed vibrocore locations shown in this Google Earth image. The target core lengths are between two and five feet. All in land under ocean. We anticipate two to four days of vibrocaring, depending on weather and coordination with vessel traffic in each berth. Next slide. So this is the proposed piece of equipment that our subcontractor will be using. It's a 25-foot Parker with a moon pool. It has a Davit and spuds to hold on location. It does have a spill kit and boom onboard in the event of any unlikely spills. And that is all we have.
Okay, that is the smallest staging boat I've seen for anything ever, actually. That's interesting. I was not expecting that image. Okay, so what are you looking for? This is going to be disposal to CAD cells, which as I look through this, are in a location precariously close to where I live, so I didn't realize they were all the way over there. What is, what are you looking for? And what is the contaminant of concern that you would want to dispose of in the CAD cells?
So the materials going to the CAD cells, not because of any anticipated particular contaminant, it's because of reserved capacity that Massport has. So there isn't any particular contaminant that's expected. However, disposal is coordinated through Mass DEP, and they will do a consult with Army Corps of Engineers. And so this sampling is required to identify the material and to make sure that it's suitable for the CAD cell.
Paul, if you let me just speak really quickly. Chairman Parker, I apologize that my video is not on. This is Chet Myers. I'm a Deputy Director for Project Delivery and Capital Programs. So with regard to characterization, all dredge spoils are required to be characterized. Because these dredge spoils come from Boston Harbor, we would expect that they would contain runoff from various different roadways and sites throughout Boston Harbor. And because of that, it's unlikely that they would be suitable for offshore disposal. And while we don't know what the exact contaminants would be, I think it's reasonable to assume that there would be some sort of asphaltic contaminations just due to the nature of stormwater runoff and possibly metals also in those materials. But we would know for sure after we characterized those materials, which couldn't take place till after this work is complete. But typically, any sediment in a harbor that's industrialized like Boston Harbor would have something in it that would not make it suitable for offshore disposal.
Okay, so to get back at my question, that's very helpful. Thank you, Chet. So at this point, you're just trying to characterize your materials. You need to dredge because you need more room in the channel. And so any of the sediment that you dredge, does that go to the CAD cells? Or is it only sediment that has contaminants of concern that get disposed of in the CAD cell eventually?
So for clarification, what we're doing is we're just maintaining the existing elevation. So we're not going any deeper than historically what has been there. And these areas were most recently dredged in, I want to say, 2017 or 2018. So anything that's accumulated in the dredge footprints likely washed into the harbor between 2017 and today. So we wouldn't expect any kind of weird historic contamination in the area. We would expect something that would represent what the current conditions are in the surfaces or on roadways throughout Boston Harbor. But we would expect to put all of that into the CAD cell. The reason being, it's very hard to segregate it once you conduct a dredging operation.
Okay, understood. And so we don't really need to worry about any of the spoils. DMF had sent a letter regarding the minor scope of this project. So when you get to the major work here, that's when we'd be talking about, you know, prevention of potentially contaminated spoils being spread all over the bottom, the seafloor or the harbor floor.
Yeah, no, this work involves really just advancing what Paul adequately or clearly described as like a vibrocore, which is really just like a plastic sheath that's about eight feet long and about two to four inches in diameter. And we're just going to advance that through the dredge spoils. And then those spoils will actually go to the laboratory. Like they're not going anywhere else right now. And then there's sort of a standard suite of tests that Mass DEP requires for any samples, regardless of what's known or not known about them. And then we'll run those and we'll get a better idea of, you know, what kind of spoils we're talking about.
Okay, good. Thank you. That's helpful. Elena, what do you have on this?
Uh, I guess.
Someone want to say something?
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, go ahead, Ellen. I thought I heard someone talking.
No worries. Yes, so we had included this in the dry folder for the Commissioners, but to confirm, DMF sent us an email saying that they don't have any additional resource area concerns due to the limited scope of the work. And we did not conduct a site visit due to the nature of the work, but we did not have any additional comments or questions either.
Okay, great, thank you. Commissioner Sullivan?
I don't have any questions.
Commissioner Linay?
I don't have any questions either.
Okay, Commissioner Herbst?
Nothing from me, thanks.
Okay, Elena, any hands from the public?
Uh, no hands and nothing.
Okay, so I think with that, I would entertain a motion to issue an order of conditions and close the hearing.
Still moved?
Do we have a second? Commissioner Linay, Commissioner Sullivan is out of motions for the year, so it's up to you.
Oh, sorry. I think my headset was off. Second.
Thank you. Commissioner Sullivan?
Hi.
Commissioner Linay?
Hi.
Commissioner Herbst?
Hi.
And I vote aye. That carries for nothing. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next item on the agenda is notice of intent for DEP File Number 0062034 and Boston File Number 2025-010 from VHB on behalf of the Massachusetts Department of Conservation and Recreation for the proposed restoration and ongoing maintenance of cobble on the seaward side of the Harbor Walk and pathway near Bayside Expo Center in Dorchester. Resource areas or land subject to coastal storm flowage, coastal bank, and 100-foot buffer to coastal bank. Who's here on behalf of the proponent?
Hello, my name is Taylor Donovan from VHB. I am here on behalf of DCR. Along with me this evening is Jacob San Antonio from VHB and Thomas Fulton from DCR.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. So thank you for the introduction. As you mentioned, we are here for the DCR Harbor Walk Repair and Maintenance Project Notice of Intent. We did receive a DEP File Number noted on the screen there. Please proceed to the next slide. So just for some context, the site location is shown where the yellow star is on the map here. It's the southern, it begins at the southern extent of Carson Beach in Dorchester. And it is part of DCR's existing Harbor Walk pathway. Next slide, please. So just to review the existing conditions on the project site here, this is looking north and east at the existing coastal bank on the project site and adjacent to the Harbor Walk pathway. So the photo on the left is looking west at the area of eroded coastal bank. Again, abutting the Harbor Walk pathway. And then the photo on the right is looking east along the coastal bank. And just for the purposes of the project, the project site for this and the area of new proposed cobble is essentially where the vegetation on the left-hand side of the screen, you can see it kind of ends adjacent to the concrete sidewalk. Where the vegetation ends is pretty much the beginning of the project site, where a new cobble would be proposed as part of this notice of intent. And then if you look, you know, the photo on the right, you can see there is a drop in elevation from the existing vegetation on the right-hand side of the screen to where the existing surface is for the coastal bank. And if we go to the next slide, please. So the left-hand side, the photo on the left-hand side, excuse me, is showing again that drop in elevation from the existing pathway to where the material has been eroded since the previous project. And then the right-hand photo is showing past the limits of the work for this proposed NOI. This is an area that's currently under an existing order of conditions that was previously provided to the commission, or excuse me, the project was proposed back in 2018 for restoration of the sidewalk and installation of cobble to stabilize the area. So there's a clear difference between the two areas where cobble maintains and where the cobble has been eroded. So next slide, please. So as part of this notice of intent, DCR is proposing to install or add placement of eight-inch cobble to restore the coastal bank in areas where it has been eroded. That area is outlined in red on the project plan shown here. And the two areas to the left and right, or west and east of this project site are the areas that are currently under jurisdiction of the previous order of conditions with DEP File Number 006-1667. And just for the commission's reference, we have outlined the 25-foot waterfront area. The northern one is extending from the coastal beach, and the southern one is extending from the limit of coastal bank. So there's no work in the waterfront area, but the work is proposed within the limits of coastal bank itself. So on the next slide, I think we just provided an overview of this work. So I should take a step back and say that the entire purpose of this project is to align with the existing order of conditions for the adjacent areas and to provide restoration and ongoing maintenance for the cobble so that DCR can continue to maintain the area, prevent additional erosion. And we want to really prevent the foundation of the Harbor Walk from being exposed to additional erosion and to ensure safety for visitors and ongoing maintenance and use of that area for the public. So this proposed work would result in 110 linear feet of impact coastal bank for placement of cobble. And it would be approximately 22 cubic yards of that clean cobble, which would be placed within land subject coastal storm flowage as well, within the 100-foot buffer zone and a portion of the 25-foot waterfront area to coastal bank. We anticipated that there may be temporary stockpiling of cobble and construction access, but I don't actually believe there would be any overnight stockpiling for that cobble material. So it would just be temporary as the trucks are bringing that material in before it's placed. And the entire project would take approximately one week to complete this installation. That is all we have. I'm happy to answer any questions the commission may have about the project.
Great, thank you. I know we're going to have some procedural questions, and I'll let Commissioner, our procedural expert handle that. I have a really basic question. You're replacing the six-inch with eight-inch cobbles. The six-inch cobble seem to have gotten washed away pretty quickly. What is the difference? I mean, are the eight-inch cobble's going to be that much more resilient than, or heavier and perform better than the six-inch cobble? Seems like if six inches would wipe away, eight inches would do the same, so.
Yeah, Jake, do you want to speak to that?
I can. Yeah, we don't disagree. You know, this is like a renourishment project. They will be mobile. The eight-inch cobble that we're speculating are a little larger, heavier. You know, we're also speculating them to be more flat than round. The previous installation was more round cobble's that mobilized more easily. DCR had success on Winthrop Beach using a flatter eight-inch. And so we've upsized it and are using like a slightly different shape this time. But this is going to be an ongoing effort, and that's why we're asking for also ongoing maintenance. As you know, this is going to be, it's a nourishment project. You know, this is a high wave energy area. There's still going to be movement. And over time, DCR will need to go in and, you know, re-nourish as needed.
Okay, I mean, I'm not, that's very helpful, that it's a different form. And so I guess I wonder about, you know, what are the effects of, you know, putting in a solution that needs constant nourishment? I mean, what are the effects on other pieces of the, other areas of the waterfront there? So I guess that's my question. Maybe it's for DCR is, isn't there something more permanent that you would like to do here, or?
Chairman Parker, how you doing? Tom Golden?
Good, how are you?
Not bad. Great question. We probably do have a long-term, the long-term solution to this area is, I think, in conjunction with the development that is happening there. I forgot the name of the actual development that's happening adjacent to the Harbor Walk. But there is, DCR is in discussions with them to possibly, you know, do a longer-term, a bigger long-term solution to the cobble area adjacent to the Harbor Walk. But there's nothing, there's no permanent solution right now.
Okay, understood. So it sounds like maybe this is a budgetary issue. You know, I'm sort of reading that in. You don't have to respond to that. But the development project, is that going to be on DCR land? Does DCR have any leverage over this developer to implement a more permanent solution here?
Tough adjective to use, leverage? I don't think we have any leverage, but there's certainly always mitigation that applies to certain pieces of projects, and we are in Nevada. And they will be looking to do some type of restoration around the Harbor Walk itself. So those are ongoing conversations.
Okay, understood. And you're absolutely right. If you don't own the property and you're in Nevada, I agree you have much less influence. That's why I was asking the question, does DCR own the property? Maybe this is a public-private partnership for the redevelopment. Okay, that's all I have. Elena?
Thank you. Yes, so as you mentioned, I think that we'll have some administrative questions about how to address this new request, because there is an existing order, which is later on the agenda for an extension for similar work, just basically right next to this project site. But I was wondering about the staging locations of the cobble on-site. Taylor, I apologize. I know my email to you came later this evening. But I was wondering if somebody on your team could speak to where the cobble will be staged, whether it will be there overnight, if it'll be just within the 100-foot buffer or within the 25-foot waterfront as well, and sort of what measures will be taken to make sure it doesn't go anywhere while it's there.
Taylor, I could probably answer the question. There will be no overnight staging. The anticipation is trucks will be coming in during the day. And what Taylor kind of alluded to, there may be some times when the cobble is dumped on the ground, but it will be, everything that comes that day will be placed within the area that it's going to stay permanently. So we don't expect any, you know, overnight staging or even, I mean, if you want to call, you know, a pile on the ground for an hour or two, temporary staging, I guess we could. But that, and it would be probably right either within the parking lot or right on the Cobble Walk area itself, as close as possible to where that stone is eventually going to lay permanently.
Makes sense. Okay, so yeah, I think we're mostly curious if there are going to be any unsupervised piles of cobble. But if that's not the case, then.
No, that will not be the case.
Great, thank you.
Okay, before I go to, I think I'll go to Commissioner Herbst first here, because we're foreshadowing this procedural question that we have. Just want to remind members of the public, please raise, if you want to comment, please raise your hand or type in the chat. If you're calling and cannot use, calling in and cannot use the platform, you can raise your hand by pressing star nine and star six to unmute yourself, or send your questions to staff via email at cc@boston.gov. Commissioner Herbst? Let's talk about procedural issues.
Okay, sure. Elena referenced that also on the agenda is your request for an extension of the existing permit that's area in between the two new areas you want to do. And I don't think that makes a lot of sense. I think it's confusing. I assume you're going to want to use, to do the work at the same time and with the same materials. When we permitted the first permit, you had indicated it would be six-inch minus. Now we're talking about eight-inch minus and flatter stone. So I raised this only as a, I think it will be easier and cleaner for all of us, but I don't really see that you need to hold on to the current permit that you're trying to extend when, I mean, we might need an updated plan, but basically your plan includes the area of work. So I'm wondering if there's, if what you think about that, was there a particular reason you wanted to do both?
Yeah, so we initially had, were planning to do an amended order of conditions to include this additional area. And then we had received guidance from Elena that VP was kind of steering away from that if there was any additional impact area. So it was kind of a guidance that we received from Elena on behalf of the commission, I guess, to instead do a full notice of intent. So that's why we wound up going in this direction, but.
Do you see, do you have any concern if we ask you to simply not ask for, that we would not go forward with the extension, but that your NOI could either, I think it may be as written, it may be, it may cover what we need, or you may need to make, you know, some adjustments to indicate the whole area. But is that problematic in any way?
Tom, I don't want to speak for.
I don't, I don't think so.
I guess I have, I do have a question regarding that.
Yeah, Jake, ask your question first, please. Thank you.
Could, I guess for us, it depends on if potentially it could get approved with a condition tonight. I mean, I guess that's where, if we have to resubmit plans and have another hearing, I guess that would be the only, I guess, my thought process.
That's kind of where I was going with my question. Are you implying that we can get an order of conditions tonight for the work? And if there was, you know, with the, I don't know the limit of work on the existing order of conditions, and Taylor might be able to answer this better.
And it's fully shown on our plan, and we have boxes that showed the prior authorizations. I mean, essentially the plan would just need to be updated. I feel like to just remove those boxes. I understand the impact areas would change if it's all under this one NOI. And I guess that's where procedurally, how the commission would like to see that and whether that can be done through a condition where we resubmit the plan and impact numbers or something like that.
I guess that, well, and this isn't just for me to answer, but my suggestion would be we might need to get updated materialists from you and vote on it next time. But to me, that wouldn't, assuming we're satisfied today with what it is you're doing, it doesn't require everybody coming back in for a hearing. That would be my feeling about it. Chair Parker, does that?
Yeah, I think that makes sense. I mean, I guess there's two ways we could handle it. We could require an update to these plans as a condition before construction. But that's, that feels a little risky, feels a little premature to do something like that. I wouldn't want to go that far out.
I also think, sorry, I also think the text of the, there's, the text of the NOI needs some adjustment that would be easy to do, but maybe beyond what you could just say, hey, send it to us afterwards.
Correct, correct. As far as, we would need another hearing, but similar to, similar to when an applicant doesn't have their DEP file number, I don't think we have to go through a full analysis of your new submittal. I mean, we'd be focused on basically, as Commissioner Herbst said, making sure that the limits of work included the previous work as well, or all the work that you're doing.
We basically, I mean, the plan that you have encompasses everything now. So there's, I think, we won't be confused about what it is and wouldn't have a need for conversation, really.
Yeah, and I think, Tom, what I would say to you is you would then, I think, DCR would then want to apply for a COC for the first order, but I don't know. That's the other thing. I guess, I mean, you have completed the work of the first, covered under the first order of conditions, right?
Yes, and then, and then, you know, nature took its course, and that's why we're back here again.
Okay, so it feels like you'd want to also file, you don't have to immediately, but you'd want to extinguish that order of conditions with, you know, an application for a COC. And then do all the work under the new order of conditions.
I know it's a little bit of an extra hoop, but I, I'm not really comfortable with extending your old condition when you actually do want to do something a bit different in terms of size and stone.
Okay, so I think what I'm hearing is that we need to revise the plans a little bit, take some boxes out, maybe beef up the narrative, change some impacts, numbers. Get that, get that to the commission, get that to Eleanor and the commission, you know, and then we'll be back in two weeks for a vote.
Yeah, I think that's right.
Yeah, I mean, if in the end, I get an order of conditions that lets us do the work that we need to get done, you know. um that we need to get done, you know, two, two order of conditions versus one seems, you know, one seems better than two to me. So if, if, and we, if we can encompass the whole thing, um that's fine. I, I, I have no problem with that. Unless Jake or Taylor sees anything that I'm missing.
No, I, I, I think that is a cleaner solution. It's just, this was a path we were, we were guided down.
Okay, yeah, we're here to help, Tom. Okay, Commissioner Sullivan.
I'm sorry, could I? I was curious about the flat, flatter stone. You're not talking, are, are you still talking about rounded stone?
A rounded stone, but more like, more oblong and flatter than, than round, like, you know, basketballs, you know? Less likely to roll, easy to roll.
Got it. And do you know, I mean, is it piling up somewhere visible, or do you think it's offshore or?
Shifted all around that beach. I mean, during, you know, most of the time, it's a pretty low wave energy, but um, you know.
Except when it's not.
When it's not, there's a, I mean, there's a, a nice fetch length when the wind is just right. And you get some sizable waves that move everything around here. Um, you know, as Michael mentioned earlier, you know, this site could use a more permanent solution. Um but given it's a coastal bank, a coastal engineer structure is prohibited, you know, be, to allow for the little drift and movement of the beach material. So uh that's where we're at with uh, you know, with nourishment of this area to help protect that sidewalk and keep it safe as well, because with that vertical drop right now, it's a, it is a safety hazard for DCR.
Okay, thanks much. Bye.
Thank you. Commissioner Sullivan.
How many years did it take for the initial six-inch stone to wash away? I mean, it's gone now, but it could have been a year, and then it's been six years of tough beach.
I think it took about five years to wash away, but.
Yeah, that's correct. I would say we noticed it about a year ago, uh, John.
Yeah, and wh- why, is there any uh scientific evidence to say the eight inches is the right size? That we don't, not using twelve, tens and twelves uh cobble? Or just they're harder to get, or it seems to me that you've gone up one size. And if you don't want it to do it again in five years, maybe we should be looking at heavier stone. I know Stone Living Lab was looking at cobble movement on beaches out, out in the islands. And maybe they found some magic that said if you use this size, you, you got a really tough stone.
Sure, I mean, as you can see from those previous photos, I mean, there is a layer of riprap that's, you know, further out. And originally, when the harbor rock was put, like, that was vegetation all the way down to that riprap. The riprap is stable, but those are probably three-foot diameter or so. So pretty much anything less than that is gonna move and shift. So I, I would agree, a bigger cobble will last longer, but we'll still need some um re-nourishment over time, given the wave energy.
Oh yeah, no, I'm not, not saying that isn't what's gonna happen, just that if you're giving it a shot now, you keep working your way up to the, the, you know, sixteen-inch stone, or just go for gusto today and put it in and see if that can bring you ten years till Dorchester Bay City comes in. And then, I know you don't want to use the word leverage, but you beat on them to do the thing right with bigger stone.
If the commission is open to larger cobble, we would, we would be happy to change that on our plans for the next submittal.
Yeah, I'm not sure what the basis would be. I'm just, I'm asking the question and looking for you guys to do the research to say, yeah, with that kind of energy, we should be using something bigger. So we're not back here again.
I, I agree on the energy side. And then where we pushed to eight inch was, you know, we originally was sized to match some of the existing cobble on the beach. Uh so we felt like upsizing it one size was still in the range of what was on the beach already.
I think that, I think that's, that's a fair statement, in, 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 in part with the, with the eight-inch, you know, you know, different style stone that, that worked in Winthrop. You know, we, we, we felt somewhat confident that this is going to work. But John, I, I, I get your point. And you know, if like uh Jake just mentioned, if, if, if uh, you know, we can look to see if bigger stone would, you know, would uh, would, would help, and, and if we, we can bring, we can, maybe we'll, we'll change that in our, our second submittal.
Yeah, and the, the other question I had is, every cobble I see on beaches is round. I, I don't, I don't see this flat one. Where, where are you gonna go get it?
It's not, it's not flat. It's just, just pick, it's the, the, the two inches that we're, that we're um, we're adding to the existing cobble that's there is just going to be.
Longer and.
Longer instead of like rounder. It's, it. I wish I had the pictures with me, but it's uh, it's just, it, it's just a difference, a different style. I don't, you know. And you don't know exactly where we got it, but the contractor that got it for uh Winthrop is getting me that information.
Yeah.
Um but uh.
It seems to me though, Tom, that the, the reason that the six-inch is so round is because it's lighter and it gets to beat itself around and, and smooth itself out.
Yeah, this is man-made though, John, tumbled. And so, so, you know, I, I, I um.
I know, it's, it's.
I just, I don't know the, the exact science to it, Mike.
Yeah, I'm just curious where they're stealing it from. What beach are they stealing it from, so? Anyway, that's, that's all I have.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Um Commissioner Linnae?
I don't have any questions. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Um Commissioner Herbst, any follow-up based on what we uh, our discussion?
Uh no, not for me, thanks.
Okay, Eleanor, any hands raised?
Uh I don't see any hands and nothing in the inbox either.
Okay, so with that, I would entertain a motion to continue the hearing uh for two weeks.
So moved.
Have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Commissioner Sullivan?
Aye.
Commissioner Linnae?
Aye.
Commissioner Herbst?
Aye.
And I vote aye, that carries for nothing. Okay, thank you. See you in a couple of weeks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sure.
Before we break, should we be just withdrawing the next one or wait till that comes up?
Uh yeah, let's, uh that's in the um. Look, yeah, I hate to keep you on. Um if the hood park proponents don't care, we can go straight to this extension. And then um, I guess what we would do is deny it, let's continue it. Let's continue it. Um so let's go to that, let's continue it, uh because who knows what's gonna happen over the next two weeks. So I'm sure Tom doesn't want to take any definitive action right now, um if that makes sense.
That's fair.
Okay, with continuance, okay.
Yeah, that's fair.
Okay, so next item on the agenda is going to be a request for an extension to the original order of conditions for D E P file number zero zero six one six six seven from D H B on behalf of the Massachusetts Department of Conservation Recreation for the proposed Harbor Walk repairs located near the Bayside Expo Center. Resource areas, coastal bank and land subject to coastal storm flowage. Is that different than the um N O I, the resource areas? Yeah, so um Eleanor, is there any reason why we have different resource areas? I don't think so, so I'll just add land subject to coastal storm flowage. I mean, um, one hundred foot, one hundred-foot buffer to coastal bank is another resource area, right? I get that right?
Yes.
I believe that's correct.
Apologies, we had included that um to account for any um sort of, you know, staging of materials and things like that, but.
Got it. Okay, okay, good.
I moved that uh we extend this uh project for two weeks.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Commissioner Sullivan?
Aye.
Commissioner Linnae?
Aye.
Commissioner Herbst?
Aye.
And I vote aye, that carries for nothing. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. See you in two weeks.
Yeah, thanks for your time.
Okay. Uh next item on the agenda is a request for an extension of the original order of conditions issued for D E P number zero zero six one seven five seven, Boston file number zero two zero dash zero four zero from Epsilon Associates on behalf of Trademark Partner Partners LLC for the Hood Park Mixed Use Master Plan Development located at five hundred Rutherford Avenue in Charlestown. Resource areas land subject to coastal storm flowage. Who's here on behalf of the proponent?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Mark Rosenchine with Trademark Partners.
Right, anyone else?
Should be just me.
Yep, you're enough, so floor is all yours.
Thank you very much. Uh good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. My name is Mark Rosenchine. We're the owner's project manager for the Hood Park Development in Charlestown. Uh next slide, please. Back in two thousand and nineteen, we went through the process of having a master plan P D A approved for the twenty acres, twenty-plus acres on the western side of Rutherford Avenue. That is the, the historic Hood Park, the old milk production facility. The Canaan family had bought that in the early nineties, and, and over the course of time, the hood program has moved to Lynnfield, and this became a redevelopment site. They were moving to office and lab use residential. And, and when we went through in two thousand and nineteen, a mixed-use campus involving residential and, and a number of uses um with a lot of new construction, uh eight, excuse me, seven new buildings built around the two existing buildings. Uh next slide, please. This is uh hood campus today. We essentially started on the lower left corner of the project and had been going clockwise. So we did four eighty Rutherford, then we did one hundred Hood Park Drive, then six stack. We have a building permit for ten stack, and you can see the existing buildings, the original five seventy, the power plant building and the main building. In terms of the program um that you would care about, the um, the goal here from a resiliency point of view, right? We're in the flood zone, the waters come around from uh Ryan Playground and, and the Shrouds Building. They come down Rutherford Avenue and, and, you know, flood through this area. And essentially, what we have done is committed to raising all of Hood Park by about approximately four feet to get it up to elevation twenty-one. And the reason we can do that is the original buildings that were there were all built at train height, so all the floors were high. And so we can raise grade around those existing buildings and still be able to get in and out of the buildings. And, and it's a benefit that they were built sort of at that train elevation. And what we've started doing on the southern end of campus as we've been going is each project we do, we raise grade, we build the building. And then we go back to FEMA, we do the survey, and we are actually having the land removed from the flood zone at FEMA because by elevating it, they can then come out and verify that in fact it is no longer subject to coastal flooding. That being said, obviously, the overall property is falls within that zone, um and we have not finished. And it's worth noting, next slide, please. The um, this actually, the, the area included here is the portion that's complete. And so we've raised grade here, we've finished it, we've done the landscaping within this area. We had a site visit by the staff, they came out, looked, we had, we've, you know, done all the appropriate and required um landscaping and fish plates and all those pieces. But you can see, next slide, there's a significant area that we haven't gotten to yet. And when we did the master plan, it was conceived as a fifteen-to-twenty-year process to develop all twenty acres, build all of these buildings. Um and so um we are in that process, but, but as you can imagine, need more than three years to do it. And, and I will note, we had originally been permitted in twenty nineteen, twenty twenty. Um this is our first request for an extension. The permit period, which would normally be three years, was told longer as a result of the extension of COVID permits. Our extension runs through October of this year, and so we felt it was appropriate to come in now, ask for the extension, because we're not close. We, we still need five, seven years, right? We'll be coming back to you guys probably more than once for extensions as we build new projects and continue to update the campus. Next slide, please. Um and so I will just show you a couple of quick photos of the things that we have accomplished here. One hundred-foot garage in the upper right-hand corner, six stack in the, in the upper left-hand corner. The new landscaping and groundwater features, which include uh a weir. And so we're collecting stormwater, we're putting it into the weir, which you see in the front uh of that picture in the lower right-hand corner. New plantings and managing the grade. And then finally, if you could squint at it, you can see my little fish plate. We, you know, seem, seem that staff felt we were doing all of the appropriate things and meeting all of the order of condition requirements um based on the work in, in, in the campus to date. And so uh in summary, what I'm, I'm hoping we can do is get an extension for another three years. We can continue doing the work that we're doing out there um and continue to report back to you guys that we are successfully implementing this effort to raise grade and, and solve the coastal resiliency flood problems in Charlestown.
Fantastic. Okay, thank you. Um Eleanor, what do you have on this?
Uh we did not have anything to add. Uh there are some uh site visit photos in the drive folder for the commission's review. But other than that, I think Mark covered everything.
Okay. Um, okay, just want to remind members of the public, if you want to provide public comment, please raise your hand or type in the chat, the application via the Zoom meeting platform. If you're calling in and cannot use the platform, you can raise your hand by pressing star nine and star six to unmute yourself or send questions to staff via email at cc@boston.gov. Commissioner Sullivan?
Yeah, Mark, when you said you, the buildings were uh train height, therefore four feet higher. You're not actually elevating the roadways themselves by another four feet, are you?
We are actually. So Rutherford Avenue is low. Um but Hood Park Drive, Supertest and Stack Street, we're elevating the roadways from Rutherford. As we move further away from it, we're, we're going uphill. And so, yes, we are. All of the roadways on campus that we are building are being brought up to that higher elevation. But at the edge, they have to bend down to line up with Rutherford Avenue, which is obviously not in our control and staying low.
Right. So what did you do with all the utilities that were, were at normal elevations, and then you put four more feet on them?
So we had a um, a limited amount of utilities on campus, because really, there was just that one, two-story building in the middle. And we've been building around it. What you're seeing is roads, we're just parking lots before. And so we've been installing the utilities, including fostering water and sewer stuff, as we've been going and doing it so that we're not having to rip out old utilities and raise them or put new earth on top of existing utilities. We're putting in new, because we needed to do a new water loop, as you're aware, we've needed to do new electric loops. And so as we're bringing the roads around campus at the new height, we're meeting all of the requirements for the smart utilities, utilitors and whatnot. And we're putting them in new.
Yeah, it was more the sewers that I was thinking of than the water pipe. I know you're putting the water pipe in, but.
Yeah, so the, the sewer that came out of the original building actually goes direct to Rutherford. It's the short distance across the sidewalk, so we weren't on top of that, because it, it's coming out at the existing Rutherford and not a section we're raising.
Yep.
All the new sewer is, is elevated, and, and when we did it, um we also, S M M A was our civil engineer. We had anticipated the um combined sewer being separated in Rutherford. We've done the elevation correctly in the new construction to make sure that as that gets redone, we're still appropriately discharging and, and flowing correctly. So we've tried to be smart about making sure that as we're raising grade, we're managing the utilities correctly. John, you're muted.
That's uh so, that's all I have for questions. I haven't come up with anymore.
Fair enough.
Thank you. Commissioner Linnae?
I have a question that's really more for, uh I think, conservation staff, I guess, or internal to us. How, how we typically deal with a project like this that has such a long timeline? Is it, is this the case where we just basically re, uh we extend the permit multiple times? Is that sort of the, the only way to deal with it?
Uh generally, yes. And if any other commissioners want to step in on this, please uh feel free to do so. But yeah, I think that um, one of the challenges that we talked about on our site visit was uh the question of a certificate of compliance and what that would look like. Um D E P generally gives us the guidance of not going for partial certificates of compliance unless it's completely necessary. So um in this case, because it is a project that's, you know, a large project, both geographically, but and then timeline-wise, it's also going to take a longer time. Our suggestion was to um record, take photos of the work as it's being completed. So that, you know, if, for example, a large storm comes through sometime between um the end of that phase of work being done and us going back to do our certificate of compliance site visit, there's also photographic evidence that the work was done correctly when it was completed. Um I think the benefit of something like this is also that we conducted another site visit and got to see the work that was already being done. And everything was, um as far as we could tell, you know, up to the, the standards of the commission and also in compliance with the order of conditions up to this point. But um I think that has been my experience so far, is that the commission usually just tends to have extension requests come back in. Um but if any of the other commissioners have further thoughts on this, please let me know.
Yeah, no, I think that's right. Commissioner Linnae, I think um we're, we're constricted or constrained by our um regulatory requirements. Uh we can, we can issue orders of conditions for three years, we can extend them for three years. The only exception that I know of, uh that I think I know of, is if you're treating like uh mosquitoes in a swamp area, I think you might be able to do something like five years, uh like a five-year plan with five-year monitoring. Uh but uh for projects like this, it's three years. And as Eleanor pointed out, one of the challenges is the um partial um C O Cs. And when you have a project that's large, and we've seen this in the seaport, um with multiple buildings, uh sometimes when the owner uh needs to refinance, um you know, a loan matures and they have to refinance, the bank will require, um you know, evidence that uh, you know, uh at least a portion of the work has been completed. Uh so we've done that on rare occasions. Um Commissioner Herbst might have something to add on to that. And if you're done with your comments, can we go to Commissioner Herbst or? Did you have any questions?
I actually do have one question.
Okay, please.
I, I guess I'm just curious if um over the course of the construction, if there was any, any significant changes to the project with something so com- complex um that, that you, that you could share or mention.
Um so there are, uh, you know, when we did the. Um, so there are, uh, you know, when we did the original master plan, we thought we knew what we were doing as a master plan, markets change, things like that change. We're on our sixth amendment to the original master plan. Now, for instance, I, you know, the the B P D A requires amendments, we we had to adjust by eighteen square feet. But it was written down, we had to change it, that was an amendment. So I don't think we've done anything major, we haven't eliminated a building, we haven't changed the building that was originally conceived of as commercial to residential or something like that. Although that that's something that I think in the real estate development world, people may look at, right? The use may change, the market changes. But effectively today, it has been minor adjustments like that to match the exact design dimensions of a building. Because as you saw in the diagram, it's a rectangle. When when you actually design it, the square footage has changed a little bit, the height might move by a little. Um, and so we've done those kinds of edits to the master plan, but but to date. Knock on wood, we we haven't had any market or other conditions that have required us to do something that I would think you would describe as a significant change in terms of the plan, we're we're still on track.
Great, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Herbst?
Thank you. Yeah, I don't know, Commissioner Linnae, I don't think I've seen one this long. Like, I I don't think I've seen this do us do this, but the one thing I'd say is I I think it's it's um. Great this that the staff did another site visit beca- because there's a three year check in if, for example. The flood zones changed or regulations changed, that could require um. A change, you know, re permitting. Um, so so we do get at least the the three year check in to to. Sort of take note of whether anything has like that could have changed. Nothing more from me.
Great, thank you. Um, uh, and a good point about the check in. Um, Eleanor, I don't see any hands raised, do you?
I don't see any hands raised either and we don't have anything in the inbox.
Okay, and Mark, uh, since since you're from Charlestown, um, I have to say this to you. Um, a couple slides back there, um, some of the uh, some of the structures were labeled whidlings. Whidlings or something like that, I don't know if that's a new typology. Uh, but you maybe you want to review that slide before you uh, break it out to a more high powered commission.
I will um, I will edit my edits. Thank you, Michael.
Okay, um, okay, with that, um, I would entertain a motion to extend the order of conditions for. Um, D P file number zero zero six one seven five seven and Boston file number twenty twenty dash zero four zero for three years.
Chair Parker, um, and close the hearing?
Yes, and close the hearing, thank you.
So moved. Second.
Thank you. Commissioner Sullivan?
Yeah, it was Whiting's milk, that was good competition. I say aye.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Linnae?
Aye.
Commissioner Herbst?
Aye.
And I vote aye, that carries for nothing. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you, commissioners.
Okay, uh, looks like there has been. Let me find it. One continuance. Sorry, I have lost my place. Okay, one continuance. Continued is notice of intent for D P file number zero zero six one nine nine six and Boston file number twenty twenty four dash zero two one. Uh, will now begin our regular meeting. First item on the agenda is a request for a certificate of compliance for D E P file number zero zero six. One nine three two and Boston file number twenty twenty three dash zero two zero from Environmental Health and Engineering, Inc. On behalf of the Hebrew Rehabilitation Center for Parking Lot Repairs and Ongoing Lawn and Maintenance Maintenance. Uh, landscape maintenance, I'm sorry, located at twelve hundred Center Street in Rosendale. Resource areas are twenty five foot riverfront area and twenty five foot waterfront area and bordering land subject to flooding. Eleanor, what do you have on this?
Yes, so uh, this has been on the agenda before because staff conducted a site visit on March thirteenth and noted that. Uh, some, and apologies to clarify, there are two phases of this work that are under separate D E P file numbers and both of them are on the agenda tonight. Um, phase two of this work had a few spots where fish plates were missing. Um, the fish plates were installed on April second, um, and so now we have placed us back on the agenda as. As far as we can tell, every uh, all the conditions have been met for the project. And uh, there are some maintenance conditions that we would recommend, including uh, if the commission votes to issue a certificate of compliance. Those are numbers sixty one, sixty eight, eighty two, ninety, ninety one, one hundred and one, one hundred and two, one hundred and five and one hundred and six.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Commissioner Sullivan, any questions on this?
Nope, no questions at all. I've been down around there and everything looked good to me.
Oh, good, good. Thanks for the extra eyes there. Uh, Commissioner Linnae?
No questions either.
Commissioner Herbst?
No questions.
Okay, so with that, I would entertain a motion to issue a uh, C O C with the following eight uh, maintenance conditions. They would be uh, condition numbers sixty one, sixty six, eighty one, eighty nine, ninety, one hundred, one hundred and one and one hundred and four.
So moved.
Give a second. Thank you. Commissioner Sullivan?
Aye.
Commissioner Linnae?
Aye.
Commissioner Herbst?
Aye.
And I vote aye, that carries for nothing. Okay, next item on the agenda is a request for a certificate of compliance for D E P file number. Zero zero six one nine eight seven and Boston file number twenty twenty four dash zero one two from Environmental Health and Engineering, Inc. On behalf of the re- the Hebrew Rehabilitation Center for the proposed resurfacing of driveway and loading dock and associated stormwater improvements located at twelve hundred Center Street in Rosendale. Resource areas are twenty five foot waterfront area, twenty five foot riverfront area and one hundred foot buffer to inland bank. Eleanor, what do we have on this or what do you have on this?
Very similar notes. Um, so everything that I said applies, uh, with the exception of slightly different maintenance conditions. The numbers for this are sixty one, sixty six, eighty one, eighty nine, ninety, one hundred, one hundred and one and one hundred and four.
Okay, Commissioner Sullivan, any questions?
Nope.
Commissioner Linnae?
No questions.
Commissioner Herbst?
Nope.
Okay, so that I'd entertain a motion to issue the C O C of the following eight maintenance conditions. Uh, being numbers sixty one, sixty eight, eighty one, eighty nine, ninety, one hundred, one hundred and one and one hundred and four.
So moved.
Give a second. Thank you, Commissioner Sullivan?
Aye.
Commissioner Linnae?
Aye.
Commissioner Herbst?
Aye.
And I vote aye, that carries for nothing. Okay, uh, next item on the agenda is a request for a certificate of compliance for the E P file number zero zero six one eight six two. From Kleinfelder on behalf of the Massachusetts Port Authority for the construction of a public recreational park, including a sailing center, building. Open air pavilion, landscaping improvements, pedestrian facilities and surface parking spaces located at ninety five Marginal Street in East Boston. Resource areas or land subject to coastal storm fluid, coastal bank, one hundred foot buffer to coastal bank. Um, Eleanor, what'd you find on this?
Thank you, yes. So staff conducted a site visit on April tenth. Um, the difference, um, which was uh, indicated in both the as-built plans. And the um, the narrative was that there uh, once the, once the construction was completed. Um, the team noticed that there was some water pooling, um, especially during some of the rainier times that they had. Uh, after, I believe it was December of twenty twenty three when the work was initially completed. Uh, based on this, uh, they decided to add a new trench drain, um, which is right next to the spray deck. Um, this was additional paving, which wasn't in the original scope of work. However, it was in response to um, managing some of the the stormwater that was on site in a more effective manner. Uh, it resulted in ninety one additional square feet of um, impervious service, surface, excuse me. Um, and I know that uh, uh, I believe, yes, there are two people from the the project team who are here and um, can speak to that further. Or I can answer any questions that uh, the commission might have.
Okay, thank you. Um, I don't have any questions. Commissioner Sullivan?
No questions.
Commissioner Linnae?
No questions.
Uh, Commissioner Herbst?
No questions.
Yeah, okay, okay, so with that, I would entertain a motion to issue the C O C with the following six maintenance conditions. Being numbers fifty seven, sixty three, seventy five, eighty three, eighty seven and eighty eight.
So moved. Second.
Thank you. Commissioner Sullivan?
Aye.
Commissioner Linnae?
Aye.
Commissioner Herbst?
Aye.
And I vote aye, thank you. Um, okay, uh, next item on the agenda are administrative updates. Or is administrative updates.
Thank you, yes. So our first administrative update um, is regarding the uh, tree and vegetation clearing. That the commission received an update on uh. I am now actually losing my place on what, when this happened, when we gave you an update, but um, I believe it was in. Approximately April or May of twenty twenty four and uh, there was some clearing at two oh one to two fifty nine Independence Drive in West Roxbury. Uh, since then, we've been working with uh, some of the team to put together um, a restoration plan. And uh, they are here tonight to present the restoration plan, answer any questions. And um, I think as staff are uh, ask of the commission is to just provide any feedback um, on if there is anything else that uh, they would like to see on this.
Okay, great. Who's here on behalf of the uh, proponent?
Uh, good evening, Andy Martino for Chestnut Hill Realty.
Great.
Um, so I can, I can walk the commission through the proposed restoration plan if that's helpful?
Yep, that'd be very helpful, thank you.
Yep, just give me a second, share my screen.
Um, yeah, you can't, they should be a presentation loaded, you can just ask for the slides to be advanced.
Oh, okay, uh, Eleanor, if you have the restoration plan, the updated one with the uh, additional trees per our site visit last week, if you could share that, that would be great.
I know that uh, Dee Dee is sharing her screen right now.
Uh, we didn't add the, like a screenshot of the plan to the slides, but I can unshare and then. Share that plan if that's helpful or do commission people want the reference?
That'd be great, thank you, Dee Dee.
Sure, just give me one second here.
Sure, of course.
Appreciate it.
No pressure.
I also have the plan ready to go if that is permissible.
I don't think you can share.
Okay.
It's one of those Zoom bomb preventative measures. We trust you, but.
I appreciate the the confidence. I should add with that, I have uh, Teo Kindermans, our landscape architect with me this evening as well.
Great, thank you.
Can we have some music? Yeah. There we go.
There it is.
There we go.
Thank you.
Sure. Um, so since we last met with the commission, um, we undertook a few steps, uh, including cleaning up the area generally in the wetlands. Um. Uh, right on the the property line, um, we had the area re-surveyed. Um, in order to have a a solid baseline to base the restoration plan on. We also reestablished some wetland flags that had been hung previously. Um, so what you're seeing here is our proposed restoration plan for this area. Um, the area which you can kind of see hatched in or outlined in orange, I should say. Um, was an existing road that's been there for the better part of twenty to thirty years. Uh, this was an access road that was originally established to provide the D C R. With access into the woods, uh, once you exit off of our property line on plan south. Um, that access road has been there for a long time and is still there today with a fence that is at the property line. Um, we're in communications with the D C R and um, their preference was to keep that road open. Um, or that access point open, I should say, um, in the event they need to get into the woods for whatever reason, forest fire, maintenance, whatever. Um, if it was, you know, amenable to the Concom. Um, in addition to that, you'll s- you'll note uh, a number of trees, shrubs and understory being proposed. And uh, the overall concept here is to uh, put it back to the way it was before the clearing happened. Um, still note trees and shrubs along the edge of the slope there. Um, and the roadway, um, and then some native grasses and um. Uh. Shrubs proposed for um, the undergrowth. Uh, we had a site visit last week with staff, uh, which I think was positive. Um. Demonstrating that the site had been cleaned up and there was a request from staff at that time to add additional trees. On the slope on the southwest portion of the site there, so you see those on the slope. Um, so we added those at their request and um, you know, we're prepared to implement this this planting season. Um, with the idea of restoring this to how it was pre- prior to the uh, the clearing.
Okay, thank you. Um, Eleanor, what um, what's your perspective on this?
Yeah, absolutely. So I think the um, sort of the biggest question that I have for the commission is um, regarding the number of trees. I think that one of the the challenges with the site is how steep the slope is. That being said, it was um, fully like wooded and vegetated before. Um, so I do appreciate that there have been seven trees added to the portion of the slope that's not quite as steep. Um, but I I think the sort of guidance or input that we were hoping to get from the commission was whether. Um, you think it would be feasible to add more trees or if there are things that could be further done to try to get this area, you know. More to more closely resemble what it looked like before the clearing.
Okay, that's very helpful. Um, I'm gonna let other commissioners um, who are better versed in uh, the health of um. The health of uh, vegetation, especially in areas like this, uh, talk more about this. Um, I'll start with Commissioner Sullivan.
Yeah, how many trees were removed in the clearing? Um, and and how many were put back?
Um, we don't have an exact number of the number of trees that were removed. Uh, the the schedule for um, additional trees to be at or more trees to be added is somewhere in the mid thirties. I think with the seven additional trees that we added to the plan. Um, and we think that's probably comparable to what was removed based on what we're able to discern from G I S imagery.
Yep. Yep, no, that was my only question.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Linnae?
So in terms of installation, um, it looks like these. Uh, trees are fairly small, so do you, do you anticipate them being? Brought in without heavy machinery, is that the goal here?
Well, yes.
Yeah, on the slope, I think it'd be uh, tough to do that with heavy machinery, but I think we'd be able to, with with our team of horticulturists and we we hire. Licensed contractors to perform this work and our horticulturists oversee it. And so I think this, you know, in consultation with our horticulture department on site is a. A plan that we're able to successfully implement and and maintain.
And related to that maintenance topic, so. Does that also go for um, plant establishment? Like if, if these go in the spring and and the summer is quite dry, is there um, any opportunity to supply um, water? And then in terms of the seed, um, the wildlife mix. Um, any upkeep of he- helping or I should say any maintenance practices that will help that to successfully establish um, through those first few years? When, you know, there's a tendency for weeds to come in and things like that.
Yeah, absolutely. Uh, so we did submit a draft uh, maintenance plan or proposed maintenance plan, and I don't know if that was really to the board or not. Um, we do have a water truck onsite that we use, uh, for those that are not familiar with Hancock Village, it's an, it's an eighty acre site. And we we have irrigation where we can have it in planter beds, you know, where where it's logistically possible and for the areas where it's not. Um, we have a water truck for that purpose that circulates and waters, especially new plantings pretty regularly. Um, so we would use that here, um, access would be relatively easy with the uh, the um, D C R access road. Um, being maintained, so we'd be able to get the water truck in there to water the plantings and our our horticulture team would be. Um, overseeing not only the install, but the the maintenance and the health of the plants. Um, conveniently, their their headquarters is maybe a hundred yards from here, so um, it it's certainly gonna be, you know, top of mind.
That's great, yeah, I'm sorry, I apologize, I see the maintenance narrative that I think I I missed earlier, so thanks for that clarification.
Yep.
Uh, that's all I have.
Good, and I would say um, that uh, I'm looking at the maintenance plan right now, um, at least the draft. Um, I think we usually see um. Usually something, see something a bit more fulsome than that, something um, a little bit more detailed. So um, I'm sure Eleanor uh, can work with you on that.
Um, yeah, there's. Yeah, if there's a template, that would be great. Um, so I, the the, I riffed off of temp- of maintenance plans that we've used for some of the construction projects in Brookline. Where we had a landscape maintenance requirement as part of the permitting for that, so you know, that was the template that was used here. Um, this was reviewed by our horticulture team to make sure that it was something that they were okay with and, you know, made sense. Uh, there's something more standardized that you guys are 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 typically used to seeing, um, that would be great to be helpful.
Okay, good, thank you. Uh, Commissioner Herbst? Yeah, I had the same reaction. I, I think I'm used to seeing language about survivability of plants and managing invasive species, those kinds of things, so, um. That, and the other question I had is whether. I can't tell from this, are you restoring the slopes to what they were?
Yeah, to, to the, to the best of our ability. So I think that was the impetus for adding the seven trees. It's staff's recommendation where the slope is more gentle and, um, well, I'm moving my cursor here, but I'm not sharing. Uh, on the plan southwest, um, on the slope where you see those seven trees that look, uh, maybe a bit isolated. Yep, thank you. Um, the idea was to restore trees there where they were previously and that was, um. You know, we were all looking at the same G I S image on the site visit and kind of orienting ourselves and it, it occurred to us that there were probably some more trees here and hence we've added some.
Okay, I, I, I have been out there, so I know that there's kind of a, it looks to me like. It was my impression, which I think may not be correct, that you had sort of cut in a road there, and that's why I was wondering whether you are, whether the, um. Graves will, are being restored, but you're, you're saying that they are, that they will be back to what they were. Is that, is that right?
Sorry, I was on mute. Yeah, I mean, that, that road that I'd mentioned that's outlined in orange has been there for the better part of thirty years, so that, that wasn't a new road that was cut in. Um. So the area that was disturbed within the buffer is being restored to what it was before.
Okay, thank you. Uh, nothing more for me, but Eleanor, did you have something?
Oh, no, sorry, I was just gonna mention the, the mute issue.
Oh, okay, thank you. I'm all set.
I try, I try not to be that guy.
Okay, okay, so, uh, looks like good progress. Um, thank you, thank you Eleanor, uh, for keeping on top of this.
So i- if I may ask a couple of questions of the ward, so we have this enforcement order. Um, if I'm reading the room right, it seems like this restoration plan is acceptable. Uh, we're prepared to implement it this planting season. Um. Uh, logistically or mechanically, when would the enforcement order be lifted? Is that after the three-year monitoring period?
Yeah, it's a good question. Um. It's a really good question. Um. I would have to look at the order and, um, and you're not gonna like this answer to, uh, and think about it a little bit, with staff. But we'll ha- we'll have more clarity for you.
Okay, I appreciate that.
I mean, my, my reaction is when the site is stabilized and it's, uh. In a condition that we know that it's going to hold, uh, as to the previous conditions before the clearing. Um, but I'm not sure, I'm not sure when that is, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
I appreciate the candor.
Okay. Okay, so, um, and then you asked a really good question. Uh, you want to go ahead with this plan. I'll go back to the commissioners. Anybody on the commission, uh, opposed to Andy, uh, implementing this plan at this point?
No.
Commissioner Linay?
No.
Makes sense?
Yeah, that's, that looks fine.
Okay. Commissioner Herbst? Yeah, I, sorry to, we just, Alice Brown made a comment that. That some of the slope isn't being restored. I don't know if she can speak to that or somebody else can.
Um. So we, when we were on site, and maybe this is where the comments coming from, we were looking at the slope. And where it's steeper, uh, I guess, Plan Center and then Plan West and then Plan, excuse me, Plan East. And then Plan West is where the slope is much more gentle and I think more conducive to planting trees and. Planting trees in a way that they would be, you know, able to survive and so, um. And that comment stemmed from us looking at that G I S image where, um, it appeared as though that there were more trees in this, that area of the site previously. Um, and so, um, I guess my takeaway was by adding those trees, we were putting it even more. Back towards how it was in its, its prior condition. Um, that was my takeaway from the site visit and then the, the ultimate revisions to the site plan. Um. The other areas of the slope that are, I, I would say less conducive to, to planting trees are being, um, you know, vegetated with native grasses and. And that. So. Which is generally consistent with what was there before.
Okay. Um. I mean, I think it makes sense to, Commissioner Herbst, unless you disagree, I think it makes sense to, um, at least proceed. Uh, because this will be something, uh, Eleanor, I'm sure you'll be monitoring. Um, as we go along, so if any modifications are needed, um, we can talk about that, right?
Yeah, I, um, so I guess I was wondering if the commission would prefer to see the updated maintenance plan? Or if that would just be something that would go through staff approval?
Um, I think at this point, I mean, I think we'd like to see it. I don't think we need it before the plan, um. I don't know how long it'll take. It shouldn't take long to develop, but, um, you know, from my perspective, the quicker the work gets going, the better for this planting season. So we'd be looking at it as a deliverable, but I think in a setting like this, administrative updates, uh, we should take a look at it.
That sounds good. Um, and Andy, I think, yeah, I think the grading question is maybe something that is still sort of outstanding for us. Um, so. I say this not knowing how we're going to try to find this information, but I, um, would love to see if we could try to figure out, um. Any sort of data that's available on the site, um, to be able to compare the, the, like, any, any grading that may have, um. That may have happened as a result of the, um, like, once the vegetation was cleared and this was turned to a snow stored area. Um, I think that that was still sort of an outstanding question here is, you know, was, was the original area this, this steep? Because we know that it was really wooded, but, um. Yeah, that was, I think that's still like an outstanding question for me.
Okay, well, uh, I think we, we can, we can talk about that and I can revisit it with our team.
I appreciate that, yeah, that'd be great.
Yeah, and Andy, to your questions before about certainty, about lifting the enforcement order and all that, and as we talk about this, it does occur to me, I mean, restorations are tricky. Um, and a lot of variables, uh, there's survivability rates and things like that, establishment. Uh, and, um, you know, uh, we, we think we know how. Um, plants are gonna behave and vegetation is gonna behave, but, um, you know, uh, not with one hundred percent certainty, so I think this is. This is sort of an iterative process, a work in progress with monitoring, uh, to get you to the, um. Position where, um, you know, the restoration plan is stabilized and we all feel better about, um, the outcome here.
Okay, I mean, that makes sense. Uh, just so, uh, I'm clear on direction, uh, we're okay to implement this plan?
Yeah, that's what I heard. Uh.
I would, um, so, I'm sorry, Chair Parker, I think that just before anything starts on the slope, we would just want to do one final sweep to see if we can get any information about. The grading situation and if this is sort of what the slope looked like before the vegetation was cleared.
Okay, I mean, that ma- that makes sense. Uh, I mean, we're not gonna plant tomorrow, um, but we would like to get it done this planting season. I think for, for sa- for, you know, the same reasons you all would, so, um, maybe let's connect next week or later next week?
Yeah, I think that works, that works all.
Okay. Perfect.
Okay, great. Okay, thank you.
All right, appreciate it. Have a good night.
Sure, you too. Okay, Eleanor, um, what else on administrative updates?
Yes, so the next admin update that we had, um, is, let's see, so, uh. There is going to be some cleaning, um, and sort of restoration work of the, um, McKay Monument on Castle Island in South Boston. Uh, D C R had reached out to us to confirm whether, uh, this was, um, allowable, whether it needed to be permitted, um, in a more formal capacity. It was our opinion that because the work is limited to actually cleaning the monument itself. Um, that, uh, as long as the, uh, you know, any runoff was properly maintained and didn't end up in resource areas, that, that would be appropriate. And, um, based on that, we issued an administrative approval with some conditions, uh, both the requests that has more detailed information about the work that they're doing. And the administrative approval are in the drive folder for the commission's review, and of course, if, um, if there are any questions or if, uh, the commission doesn't agree with this, uh, please let me know.
Okay, great, thank you. Uh, any questions? Many commissioners? Hearing none. Um, and we don't have to ratify an administrative approval, right? Because it's an administrative approval.
Yes.
Okay, okay. Um, and last item, I think, Harren enforcement order?
Correct, yes. Uh, this was, uh, a situation where we had received, um, both a phone call and an email, um, about. Some potential, uh, grading and potential fill work that had happened in the backyard of a single-family home. Um, we were unable to get in contact with the property owner through a letter of probable violation, which we sent at the end of last year. Um, and based on that, followed up with, uh, an enforcement order. The original letter as well as the enforcement order are in the, uh, drive folder for the commission's review. But, um, I'm happy to answer any questions about that as well.
Okay, and you would need this ratified, correct?
Yes, please, that's, yes, that's the request here.
Okay, uh, Commissioner Sullivan, do you have any questions?
Nope.
Commissioner Linay?
Uh, no.
Commissioner Herbst?
Sorry, did I cut myself off? I said no.
Thank you. I'm just looking through it quickly here. I'm sorry, I didn't see this before. It looks fine to me. So, um, with that, I'd entertain a motion to ratify the enforcement order, uh, regarding, um, fifty Harren Street in West Roxbury. Would someone like to make the motion? Commissioner Sullivan? You have the chance.
No, I wanna stay on all night, just pulling out.
It's so, so moved. Thank you.
Second.
Yeah, thank you. Um, Commissioner Sullivan?
Aye.
Commissioner Linay?
Aye.
Um, Commissioner Herbst?
Aye.
And I vote aye, that carries for nothing. Thank you. Um, anything else, Eleanor?
Uh, no, that's it for admin updates, thank you.
Okay, last item on the agenda is acceptance of meeting minutes. I was able to review December eleventh and March fifth. December eleventh, twenty twenty four, and March fifth, twenty twenty five, so we're making great progress. Um, so I would entertain a motion to accept the meeting minutes from December eleventh, twenty twenty four, and March fifth, twenty twenty five.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Commissioner Sullivan?
Aye.
Commissioner Linay?
Aye.
Commissioner Herbst?
Sorry, hi, aye.
Hi. And I vote aye as well. Um, so that passes for nothing. Okay, so this is a great time of the evening, uh, motion to adjourn by acclamation, any objections?
None.
Okay, thank you very much. Enjoy the rest of the evening.
Thank you all.
See you guys.
Thank you.